For Gackel City Council, Monday, January third, two thousand and twenty-two. Do you guys have a chance to read minutes from our previous meeting?
I can't.
Anyone have any corrections or additions for that?
It's good to meet you.
If not, we'll take a motion to take a motion to approve them. Larry, your second?
Second.
Lauren, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Alright, then we need a motion to approve the agenda unless you guys have something to add.
Good.
Should've looked.
I added a few since I sent mail it to you guys. But they're just undermined.
Lauren, we had something, didn't we? I apologize, I should've added that earlier. Oh, about the this new deputy. I think we should address that so that we don't I'll just put new deputy here. And that that'll explain a little bit more too there, but. Okay, um, anything else from anyone? That was my fault, Lauren, I should've told Sherry about that. Okay. If not, we need a motion to approve the agenda as read today.
I'll make that a motion.
Jeff, second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Recognized visitors, I need to call Daniel Schwartz about well, you know more than sorry, this is
I just read that thing, it's something, what does it say?
Homeland Security Discussion, I think we go through this every one or two years. Uh, I'll just get him on the phone, he can explain what's going on here.
That's all I know is what it said. And then I talked to him this morning, he said, call in.
Okay. Okay, hold on now.
This is Daniel.
Hey, Daniel, how you doing? This is Andy calling from the city of Gackel.
Hi.
Say, uh, we were supposed to call you and go over some stuff about Homeland Security again.
Uh, yeah, so, um, in December before Christmas, I, uh, I, um, had my L E P C meeting at the school in Gackel and we were going over new construction discussion over potential, uh, Homeland Security grants for next year, so, um, and I, as I said, if anybody wants to apply or give some funding if they're interested to then start maybe, uh, get together some outdoors, open the project, and so one of it was, uh, Gackel last year in Homeland Security, they were pretty successful with some grants that we, that we got uh, basically all our Homeland Security grants from the Gackel, what they were was a new project that the U N scope, um, setting around the, uh, an elementary school playground at the school. And, uh, I, I'm getting this request, I applied for because it's Homeland Security Act of Control, that kind of thing, uh, though that split the B M O, and Homeland Security looked at it and they got thirteen thousand bucks to put in on, to go to fencing. Um, so then, of course, everybody across county is like, oh, well, we should put fencing around chose this over Napoleon, and it's over, you know, maybe Perdonia, and everyone started talking about what we do with fencing. Because those are some of the capabilities that B M S currently something. Uh, another example was, you know, uh, uh, Kippsville, over at the care center. I worked with her on writing a grant ticket, a security camera system installed, she got that thousand funding, and where she's currently working to get that installed, so there's a security, security camera, um, available as well, if, you know, in a way. The old generator, some duty, actually, she resides at the school later this spring. So while we were, we had the meeting, um, while Daniel Schwartz was at the meeting, and I said, um, what should we do about, you know, some of the city level stuff, and I think it was Andrew Bartholomew, he said, well, I think you should contact the city and get on their next agenda and just kind of have a discussion then and see if they have any needs for any kind of projects similar to that, so the only thing, so what I suggested was when I go to Gackel for the city itself, is that you have, or the city hall building is, and you have the new siren, the emergency siren, water tower, all kind of right there, correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Uh, where's, where's the lift stations for the city?
There's, uh, three of them. There's one out by the lagoons. And there's one by Miller Honey.
South of town, that would be.
Right.
Right. Okay, cause like I thought of, what, what, do we do a, if it's, if it's a hundred percent funded? So do we do a project in Gackel where we could fence off the area for the lot that City Hall is on, and you could, and you could prevent people from coming in and fencing with the emergency siren, or the water tower, first of all, the water tower has, um, uh, mechanisms on the bottom, so you can completely climb on it and whatnot. But, um, you know, that's a, it, it's a structure that we're protecting in, in, um, City Hall, and if you, like, you know, if you have that area, if you want it for storage or whatever, you know, that's an option. If there's fencing you want to do around, um, you know, lift stations, maybe that's one, I know Napoleon, they're gonna look at doing one around their, uh, lift station and water tower. Um, and then emergency siren as well, uh, we talked about the school, um, excuse that school, um, over, we've got other lift stations, I think, in Napoleon, um, but they, they, they were in the process of and that's kind of what they wanted. We talked about the city, City Hall with some of, uh, you know, they have like, uh, sand for stoneable and, you know, cobert, other things that they got, that they've committed before, so they wanted to fence up that area to protect, you know, some things that they have. Um, at the L E P C, when I, I talked about the hole in it, and all the guys was out there, you know, they don't need any fencing at the fire hall, uh, ambulance hall is where it is, uh, I talked about this stuff to the school. Uh, I don't know if City Hall, um, you know, the, 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 the thing that uh, limits us is that if the City Hall, you don't have any kind of other Homeland Security thing in it. Uh, and what I mean by that is in Napoleon, they have the, um, they have the, uh, I can't remember now, office, so, so, police department, sorry, in their City Hall, so that is a law enforcement service. So therefore, that building is a law enforcement building. Now, Gackel doesn't have any law enforcement, uh, based in the city per se. Um, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Office or anything like that.
Correct, yep.
Um, so, let, let me just stop right there for you to further to leave, so like my example of fencing um, or, you know, do you guys have anything else, a topic I'd like, you know, do you need or act of control at City Hall, or security cameras? Um, do you have anything, uh, you know, Homeland Security need that you know of, aside from what it is, the campus I gave?
As far as fencing or cameras, I guess, no, but is there, I mean, what all does that cover? I'm not
It, it, it can be anything, the way FEMA works is they have thirty-two more capabilities, and so, basically, they decide, the, the Homeland Security grants are very much, um, representative of current events, shall we say, so, um, when we have, you know, a lot of like gun violence, per se, they do a lot of grants for active shooter training, you know, um, things like that. And so, basically, whatever you need, I can try and work to get it funded under Homeland Security, see if I can find it, you know, whatever, uh, capabilities or funding that here. I can try and get that to fit into one of those, and the, the only thing I can say is that what you do is try. The only thing I ask in return of the city would, would be to have the scope and the immediate information in terms of cause and what it is, and I'll take it from there. Um, any other, what, 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 what do you have in mind?
You know, one time, when we put that siren here by City Hall, I don't know, there's still residents up on the east side of town that supposedly don't hear very well.
Yep.
Uh, and it was talked about putting one on the east side of the park. We're
Okay.
Whatever ended up with that.
So, I actually know what you're talking about, Lauren, and we did I, I applied for funding for that siren, and we did scope it. What, since we happened, was there was a mistake in the administration in the grant, um, paperwork. And when they awarded the funding, I got it, but the, the way that they had it put in there was that the way, basically, the way the numbers put it is that the funding for all the other sirens we got, was there was the, uh, first one, Gackel, there's one, there was, there was three at once. And we thought that that one had got funded, obviously, out of Gackel, but they actually didn't, just because I, I think what they were actually doing was wanting to make sure that they covered everybody, and if they had, actually, they'd go back and, uh, hit any that had, uh, two requests. And so, I think the way that it went was that they thought, you know, they need upgrades, their main siren, at least, if that's taken care of. And then hold on to the other, uh, ones where, you know, we, we expand the system. And unfortunately, you know, emergency siren is the public information warning capability through FEMA. And ever since twenty sixteen, when we did that siren project, they have not, uh, been funding the public information warning capability in their grant programs. So it's the timing on that one, that's what happened with that.
Okay.
Does that make sense, kind of?
Yeah.
Yeah, right, I'll kind of lock within the spot, but, um, if we want to continue to pursue that siren, you know, we already have it scoped, uh, that was another one I, uh, I have, I have listed here. Uh, is that kind of what you're telling me, is that what you want me to, to continue with, is that siren project on the east side of the park?
Like
Can't think of anything else.
Can you hear it? On your end of town, the siren, the house?
Yeah. Yeah, I can hear it.
So while you guys are kind of discussing, maybe, let me give you some more example, you know, at the school, um, you know, it's Mark Bergen there now, but, you know, we got, uh, we, we've done extensive work with the school, it has a place. And what I mean by that is, you know, we got security camera systems at the Gackel care center. But we also upgraded and expanded it at the school. And one night, same was Nancy for a thought, and, um, suggested that we add a camera on the south end of the building where the bus pick up kids. And, um, you know, so that was a, that's, you know, the whole population, and children being, you know, uh, getting on a bus. And so to have that, to add surveillance is, you know, a great idea. But we did that, and we also got a grant funding for, um, you know, the, when you go to the school, you get the press, the aircon system, you know, that was a grant that I wrote for the school. And we got that funded too, so those are some of the types of Homeland Security things that they're looking to do. You know, there are, obviously, there's also generators. Um, I've worked with the school, I'm trying to get a generator, I don't know, do you guys, do you need a portable generator for any of your lift stations?
Possibly, I mean Yeah, we were just talking to one by Miller Honey, possibly. I mean, if that's relevant, or, you know.
Yeah, cause so here, let me just, let me just kind of get right down to the bottom line here. What I like to do with Logan County and the, you know, the, the people that I serve as in my county role as a nurse manager, I want to make it easy on you guys. So I'm, I'm calling to kind of say, whatever you guys think you need in terms of equipment, or whatever it is, just go out and just find, just find, uh, the scope and, uh, the, um, the bids or proposals or quotes or whatever. And let me know what you, uh, just send an email, just send it to me and say, hey, uh, we need this because X, Y, and Z. And I can buy it on, on behalf of you, for you. And since these are a hundred percent funded, it's, they make it really easy, you don't do local batch, whatever, so always, always apply for that to have information. Every year, you know, we might need to update codes.
When, when is our deadline to get this stuff in to you?
Uh, that's, okay, so, that I don't quite know, because the grant, they always, they're always in the spring, sometimes they change. So that's why I want to talk to you guys.
Soon as possible.
If you just get it ready for me, um, then you don't have to wait on me, and then whenever the grant are announced, I'll write it down.
Is there Is there a place online or anything that we can go so we can kind of get an idea of all the different things that we could apply for?
Uh, you can go to FEMA, you can type in FEMA capabilities, um, and just read up on their core capabilities, and then, you know, type in a, uh, uh, Homeland Security grant on P E S on site, and they'll kind of, they'll be telling you about it, um.
Well, I was just thinking, cause if there's something we could come up with, you know, we have the Fourth of July celebration. If there's something there that we could kind of multi-use, I guess, if you would, that would kind of fall in like what, what you said, about, you know, year to year is kind of the way our world is changing, I guess, if you will, but, uh.
What about Fourth of July, what could we do?
Well, we have a parade going through town, if there's something there we could use that we, you know, we just how, how do I want to say it again? Not barriers, but things like, you know, all we have is ropes and stuff through there, but, uh, if there's something we could, you know, use there or multi-use around town too, there's something maybe we just, we'll check into and, and kind of get back to you on that.
Yeah, that was, that's, that's act of control as well, so what you're telling me right now, is let's say that you went, it's not what you needed. And you thought of, of quotes, you know, fifty thousand bucks. Okay, I would turn around, I would go and write the grant and say, look, if City Gackel needs these barriers, here's the cost, here's why, because they have Fourth of July, raises the population, the act of control, Homeland Security, all that kind of stuff, they'll be able to handle some of those projects, like we kind of was telling some of that stuff right there.
Exactly.
Exactly what, what we're, what we're looking at.
Okay, perfect, yeah, let's look, do a little more research on this. And then, uh, we'll definitely get back to you on it and see if we come up with something.
Yeah. Yeah, you call, call, uh, Sherry, I have my email, I know Lauren does too, but, you know, just, like, uh, call me anytime, any questions. Um, and we kind of, uh, you know, we'll report them there, so what I'm hearing is, you know, the, the security fence idea, probably has something you want to do.
I, with how our water tower and everything's set up, I don't think we'll need fencing anywhere around here that I could think of. Uh, maybe portable generators is a good idea, the way, uh, our city guy Bill is, is shaking his head there for one of the lift stations, but yeah, it's just something to think about, I guess we weren't really prepared, you know, as far as what we could apply for, you know, so.
Okay, and then, um, let me just say one more thing, I think I was talking to Andrew Bartholomew about it. And what I've learned in grants is that the way that you qualify for grants, it depends on what you have, so like my example of Gackel City Hall not having a law enforcement office in it makes it a little more challenging, challenging to write grants, but if you had a law enforcement office in that building, that essentially would become like a police station or whatever. And if then, now, makes the building, uh, eligible for law enforcement grants, and it expands its eligibility, shall we say?
Right.
So what I'm, so, so what I'm saying is maybe, I don't know, I've never been in that building, I don't know, but maybe there's a way that we can partner with the county, have a conversation to kind of pseudo, make a, a, an office space to say, yes, this is the Logan County Sheriff's Office, uh, Gackel, family office. And if we take that case, it's going to look a lot, it's going to be a lot easier for City Gackel to start obtaining Homeland Security grants.
So they do all the fingerprinting here and their interviews and stuff?
Want to do, but, you know, maybe just think about it.
We, we do do like like for our city court and everything we do in here, and I was and we do all our fingerprinting and what else did you say?
Um, like when y'all were hiring police officers and they have
We interviewed for police officers, you know, the deputy and stuff, I don't know if that amounts to anything or not, but.
It's not supporting any operations. It isn't, and that's why I would stress this as a way that we could say, yes, we have a desk, if they could use it more, and more expanding that, the, the example I'm giving is in Logan County's courthouse. Um, like, um, hey, and he is a state trooper, and he does some services out of the courthouse, so I said, Andrew, well, we should actually make it more of a permanent thing, kind of county commission, and maybe if we have an actual highway patrol office in the courthouse, then that's a statewide agency, and then we'll diffuse that many more grants up to the, the math side.
Sure, okay.
I'm just kind of bringing this up, kind of bringing this up everybody off the cuff. Cause I'm trying to translate that across the county, it's just a way we can reposition buildings that make sort of more favorable for grants.
Okay, sure, no, we sure appreciate it.
Yeah. Um, I, I know, I, I know I threw a lot at you guys right now, um, but with what you're telling us with barriers, maybe we can start with that one. Um, I hear no one is a security fence thing. Um, when I, when the grant actually does open up, um, I will be reaching out to, if Lauren's on L E P C, I'll be reaching out to everybody in L E P C, and say, hey, it's open up. Uh, it's open now, here, the day, here's what I need, if you're still thinking, you send it to me. So I will have, um, I just, I'll reach, I'll reach out in correspondence from you guys, you won't this, this won't be the last time you guys hear from me about this grant opportunity.
Okay, yeah, no, let us
And then, like I said, any questions, just call me.
Perfect, our next meeting should be February seventh, the way it looks, so, um, you might be hearing us from us that night at, at seven again, so we appreciate the phone talking to you.
Just go down to the generator right away, how will we talk about it then?
Excellent, we'll do that, yeah, absolutely, we'll be a little more prepared then for you, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, we're gonna end between now and then, I'll try to get some information, you guys, mine, too, survive the city.
Excellent, thanks a lot, Daniel.
Sorry, you're welcome, have a good night.
Yeah, you too, thanks. Alright, guys, I, any questions or discussion on that? I just don't know
I mean, it'd be nice to have, like, a couple more of them barriers. You know, where we can block a whole street off if we needed to, or
Well, after what happened in Jamestown last year, especially, people were driving through their parade, jeez. I mean, just to set them across and be done with it.
I mean, we can, we can walk out, you know, but, you know, but at least it'd be nice to have a couple more. So is this grant funded, even, even him as being the grant writer, we haven't paid this guy to do the hundred percent grant?
No, he is, no, no, that's his job, to do that for us.
It'd be nice to have more cones too.
I was gonna say, there was some, come up with a list of stuff like that.
We'll have to get in and research what, what we got. It's, there's gotta be something we can check into for as far as more broader than a goddamn fence around a water tower. I don't think we need that, so.
Warrant tape for three hundred feet. You know, unless if you had enough to do, Ellen, at least, you know, and maybe birch, so you two, four, six, I don't think eight would hurt you, you know, they did.
Well, you know, like the the pump house down there, that was a grant for that fence too, wasn't it? I see.
I think so, yeah.
That's a whole pointless down there.
Yeah, I know.
Let's, let's find something more productive than that, that's what they're not gonna use.
Right, yeah.
You know, you talk to generators, you know, I never thought of that, lift station at Miller Honey. You know, that served all these people down there.
Yeah, I don't think a generator's gonna hurt you much.
No, it's not, you never know when a guy could need it, or, you know, like
It's better to have one rather than
Generator goes out, you know, at least we have a, another backup.
You bet. Yeah, yeah, we'll definitely stay on top of that one, if you guys want to look into that a little too, I'll try to
Get a generator for the water system down there. If we can get it under a grant.
And this is all
I don't know, mixed up mess that time, water tower.
In the Homeland Security, a hundred percent, but he's, he's the one who mentioned it.
This is all new though, I mean, this is ever since all this stupid shit that's going on.
Well, I guess, I guess, I'm not gonna
That's why the barriers would probably go, because of how many people are driving into a bunch of people killing.
I can see a barrier as being a really easy thing to do with this. I mean, he's the one who mentioned generators, so.
Yeah, let's see what we can do, and worst case scenario, we I'll try and look into that and get some print offs or something good to you guys. And maybe it's not that vague, I guess, I don't know.
We should put a fly for down there at the water tank. And take that generator then, cause that was a mixed up mess that time when you know, direct electric, we just ran up to Cooper Stone and grabbed one.
Right.
And the city did pay for which we wouldn't have to say anything. Take, take that one to the co-op, because that's one of the problems. And that's what I brought up at that one meeting. I said, you know, the trouble is with all these generators out there, most of them have a runtime of maybe thirty-six hours at best. We can't, couldn't even fuel them up, because we had no way to pump fuel. And so what good is a generator do if you can't get a fuel source to it?
Now, we don't need cameras anywhere, like where you keep all your tools stored or anything like that? You got a lot of stuff up at, uh, shop up there, might need, need, need some cameras, so
We can do some work.
So nobody can
Lauren, yeah, come up with something you guys do, like down there or up there.
Far as cameras, I don't think we need anything up there at the shop.
World's getting crazy, they're taking mail out of people's mailboxes down here.
Well, yeah, just like I said, think on it, maybe look around, and if you come up with something. I'll try and find something that's I don't know, maybe there's a list somewhere out there. Call around, I can try and call Todd down in Pauline, see what they're get creative, I guess, so. Any other discussion on that, guys? Uh, Bill, what do you got for us?
Jeremy's truck is still broke down. I don't think he's very, I think, in quality yet.
No, I didn't even think he was in today.
We were able to get Eric's pick last week, so the trunk is still full. Which is, it's sitting in the shop down there. Last time he took it to Jamestown like this, it died on us, and I didn't feel like having another tool fee.
Or just, they feel it's the main computer on the transmission? Or the main harness coming from the computer to the transmission? And Jeremy, quality was supposed to be finding information, trying to find this harness in a, in a, in a computer. And that's what I was trying to find out today, but I don't think he came in. Nobody knows what he found. So I didn't even tell them, I said, they can find the, the stuff. I mean, I'll just go down to the building down there and switch it out, and we'll have the tool back to quality. But getting the parts is a deal, it's
It's kind of the high priority.
Yeah. And I've been after him, but I, he wasn't in today. And we did I called him three times this morning, and he was never in.
What year is that truck?
The oral, ninety-four.
Ninety-four, the body and everything?
No, I don't know what, when the, when the compactor was built, I don't know about that either.
I wouldn't have a clue, we moved that over
That was on, was that on cabbages?
No, that was on this truck, wait a minute, I don't know. We moved that earlier, but that, I don't know whatever happened to that one. But this one we bought, this was Napoleon's old one?
That was all before I Well, not a new truck, that's for sure.
I think we're getting closer and closer, we're getting forced into some of your
I think so.
We can't get garbage pickup here, we're kind of on our own.
We worked it into Homeland Security.
You know, the problem is, we, I don't think we can, we can afford a new
Well, I have newer trucks. Eric, crazy, I think.
Well, I would say this year would be
I heard Napoleon was getting a new truck. So I don't know if they're gonna do a third one.
Well, we should find out why they're getting rid of it first.
Right.
You know? And maybe they'll just upgrade it, you know?
Stop, stop.
Playable grants and stuff out there at times. There might be garbage, real garbage, or whatever. And I doubt to be can, I guess, yeah.
Who do we talk to that we signed up for all those grants and stuff, they're gonna let us know, is that do you remember? We paid that it's like thirty-five dollars a year, whatever.
Company, or whatever it was, it was supposed to be Grant Finder or whatever.
Yeah, they'll set, they send some, so do you want me to kick them over to you?
Do you have a number or contact for them? Where we could ask them about garbage truck, I mean, I would say
There's, there's
Should be something
There might be an opportunity there.
If you could just try and find, or I can talk to Tom from Moore, you know, who would contact, I guess, I don't know.
That wasn't through the lead of cities, was it?
Um, I'll look it up and then I'll get it to you, yes. Anything else?
Um, we want to talk about that guy down there in the corner.
We sure can, it's
We're gonna do it here soon, quick.
Just Jason down here, when the old Creeker House jumped me the other night about snow removal at his house. And then I don't know if Larry knows about it, but I don't think either council members know about it. Um, he's saying we're putting snow up into his is, up into his driveway. And we are trying our best not to do that. Just because of that one other year, I know we did it. You know, once their Tom did put some snow down there, they took it over the storm sewer. So we, we figured that was an okay spot, but I guess that was not a good spot to put it either.
And how long is, is that where our notes always put it? I mean, what little bit of investigation I did today is, I don't really see that that was should have been a problem from where it was sitting on that corner like that.
He complained even
My understanding is the concern is that the water goes in your basement. And I can promise you that about eighty-eight percent of the town has the same problem with the water that we all have on our property, we have significant amount of snow on all of our properties. I'm not sure on that
I know, we're not we're not gonna clean out in front of everybody's or not even one person's front of their house, front of their driveways. So we've We got caught doing that once, and old Tom got in big trouble for doing that a couple of years ago.
Oh, God.
You know.
Well, my recommendation was, um, is to at least keep the storm drain clear. So we'll push to that corner and bucket into runs, let us, is that still okay, we dump into your property there on that corner until it fills up?
Yeah, it's all right.
Okay, um, and bucket it out, not pilot, just bucket it out there, you know.
Over the drain, so.
And then we'll have to address it after that fills up, but just leave the drain open, but I agree a hundred percent, we're not cleaning out in front of people's. That building is so close to the road, that's what sucks, but, you know, we're not gonna push it up and pilot there, we'll leave that drain open. Because I know I talked to Brett and he doesn't want us coming through his lot and pushing it all back, which would be the best scenario.
Right.
But apparently we wrecked some of his bushes, that Jason's bushes, and then left Rutz', and there's a sinkhole there in Brett's property, so. I just say we'll just keep the peace on that one and bucket a few out, so that we at least, just to that corner, I'm not saying, any more than you would in front of anyone, that was my recommendation, but I, it's up to you guys.
But I would agree, I mean, I know a lot of years he complained about the garage and the sidewalk going to that house.
Well, yeah, if you're pushing snow up on a guy's yard, and it's, you know, ten feet tall, I get that, I understand the concern, but, from where it was at, it was only off the road, maybe, you know, three or four feet from what, you know, and then right over the top of that, that storm sewer, which is, really not any is, issues.
Well, when that storm sewer backs up, then that's where the water's. Which I, we get a lot of water down that street, so we should, you know, keep that, especially towards spring, but, and like you said, we screwed up that a few years back, but.
Well, he even told me that night, that it doesn't matter how much the snow is, he's still gonna pitch, he said, he said that right to my face.
Well, the way you went about doing it is another story that, that we had no control over. So, no, we haven't started on that, I'm not very happy with that. Yeah, I mean, I understand. I think what you're doing is good, I, 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 what, what you're saying is to move the snow out of there, if you bucket it out of there, that should minimize the, the.
But only the storm sewer.
Right, 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 right.
If we get older, a little further, there's a wellhead in there.
Sure.
Casing, and you don't wanna hit that, you know, Bill, were you with him when we?
He dug that out now, he's got that sequence, that storm thing.
I'm not saying jump any curbs or go any further, I'm saying straight to the curb, keep that storm drain open.
There's gonna be some streets in town that I'm gonna have to start widening out if we get another shot of snow like that. And I'm starting to do some of them now.
I saw, I saw you run up Main Street, that looks good. I mean, that's what we have to do, I, I've had to do it, we've had to do it, we've all had snow over, we had to push on people's yards.
Just try to keep it, try to keep it armed in the sidewalk. And some, like Twilight East down here, she lets me push it as far to the west as they can.
Just be careful with, and if you have to talk to Lauren, you probably know where they're at, but keep an eye on those curb stops, because there's some sticking up. You know, as well as I do, up and down these roads, on the sidewalks and stuff, start pushing the way I want.
Oh, right, yeah.
As long as we're on snow removal, you know, should, we should probably talk to Andrew Bartholomew. Uh, that house up there, on the west side of the street, he's always got that van, now this time, he had the van there, the state went around it.
I, I cleaned it up a little bit, I noticed you cleaned it up, I just tried to provide a little more.
Same thing, when he tries to come through with his blader, that's getting skinnier there, so he's having to go real slow, so he doesn't hit a vehicle on both sides.
I, I certainly cleared the curb and I pushed it out a little bit, that's all we can do, but, uh.
I think he should be more aggressive in moving it, and I think we should let Andrew get that, because there's no reason, it's what, three, four days, that that van stood there and that drift was beside him.
Understood.
Get, get it out of there so that everybody can. You know, he's, he could make arrangements with either Stella or the COOP to get that van, especially if it's a pending storm, like now suppose there's one, chance tomorrow.
Right.
He could park it over on the COOP lot.
How does our ordinances read, as far as how long a vehicle can be parked in one spot without being moved, isn't that something?
Seventy-two hours, isn't it?
Huh?
I think it's seventy-two hours, isn't it?
I think that's century code, isn't it?
Yeah, I, I didn't bring my book up, I, I think it's seventy-two is right.
Well, he is, that is primary. For weeks on end, I mean, it's just, it just, it shouldn't be done, I mean.
Maybe we should go the next step then, and talk to the state, that is a state highway coming through, and Jamestown has, I mean, you hear it all the time, they just had another deal, if you don't move your vehicle by such and such time after it snows, you're getting towed.
Yeah.
Yep.
I would think that would apply in this situation.
When we stopped over there and I, and I got behind his vehicle, and he hopped out and he went over and he grabbed, grabbed it, moved it to the other side of the street, and I, and then, I plowed out of that, I mean, if he's willing to work with us a little bit, that's a lot more than, than, than what we could ask for in a lot of senses, but, but yeah, as far as the ordinance on those streets, it'd be a lot better if you could find a different spots, particularly with, with a snow event that's gonna happen.
He's got rooms back there, don't he?
Yes, Dave Rendell keeps it open.
I mean, and he doesn't drive that thing in the winter time anyway, get the thing off, get in the backyard.
Yep, Dave opened, I looked at Dave specifically, David had the back open, I think about a day after the storm, and he went all the way past, Johnny's place.
Yeah, well, I think, uh, he probably did that, just hopefully he would get it off the street. They, Stacy was over there showing the snow off of that super company, getting it out of there.
Well, if we're talking about that one, let's, I'll, I'll jump into it with mine, with the opening the pathways to read meters. Um, not that they move snow, but we have a few of these houses, and, uh, Jamie Riley, one of them, that just has stuff all sitting there, right where you walk to go to get to the meter, and when the snow covering it, one of us is gonna fall down, break your ankle or something. The last time they had mop buckets and all kinds of, right in your way, I mean, down here, we moved the meters so we could get to it, now we got cars, we're gonna go in inside, in and out of cars just to get to it, um, and the snow comes and piles up and sits in there, so now you have a really hard time getting in it. You got boats down here in the way that you gotta go around, cars on sidewalks that you can't even, you have to go way back out in the road just to go back in to read the next meter. I'm more for the debris stuff, like down here, buckets and just junk sitting there, so when you walk, you don't even see it in the snow at all, and next thing you know, you're tripping. Maybe that's one we gotta look at before it snows next time. Do we have a ordinance allowing?
Not on somebody's personal property can kind of be touchy stuff.
Is it?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I don't know, you know, I understand a hundred percent your concern, but I don't know how a guy would, fix that without just going electric meters.
Yeah, and most everybody in town has it, so when you go to them, there's a nice clear path, I mean, they don't, they don't take the snow away, but that's fine, but there's not a bunch of snow sitting.
That kind of ties in with the water meter grant. You know, because what do they call this, you know, they had three different types of meters, now you guys weren't here. We could just, we'll talk about that, but then.
I did call up today, and water meters are definitely covered, and I had her send me an email so I could put it into our, our team, so we know for sure for a fact it's covered.
Get any meter into the problem areas.
He didn't leave a meter here for a sample, or she, that lady.
I got one major here, I mean, it's like in other ones.
Let's just, we'll circle back to it, let's get one thing done at a time, so what is your guys' suggestion about up here on Main Street, so we can clear that up, or get something done?
I think the.
Talk to him and see if, have, have to talk to him and see.
Yeah, I think.
Because that's our.
Just ask him if he would please move it off the road during the snow, man, would help in man's loop.
You know, like if they're predicting snow, who wants to talk to him, put it that way, I won't.
Hand her, oh, I mean, so we pay our.
We just gotta, okay, oh, we gotta figure something out then, if we're getting that many complaints and everything, so.
Because that's the thing, like this last snow, they gave you a state law, the driving lane, you even had to move over into the oncoming traffic.
You couldn't go too wide a vehicle in there until the last couple of days, you had to wait for one person to back.
There's no excuse for it, you know, three, four days after the snow, and still.
When the city's willing to push it, yeah, up to the curb, so let's talk to Andrew and see what, if there's anything else we can do, because it's a state highway, then is that where we're?
That's what I would say.
And then talk to him and see, I mean, hopefully we can do it civilly so that it's done, because it's, it's not just this here, obviously.
I can ask.
And I get it, yeah. It's, yeah, it's, it's blocking a bunch of shit, so let's start there then, so we can address this and be, okay.
As I was gonna say, the reason I won't talk to him is because I pushed snow for him, and I hit a bicycle that was buried underneath the snow, I couldn't see it, it was totally covered.
You're liable.
And he wanted me to pay for it, I gave him a hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, we're not doing that again, then.
And I was on, you know, just, a lot of steps, pulled down, next to the new, had the back wheel of a bicycle bent to hell, I didn't see it.
Understood, I understood.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll contact Andrew about that, then. All right, and then the next thing on the water meters, so we can, just don't be jumping all over here, guys. Bill, what'd you find out, anything?
Um, I got a couple quotes here. Essentially, this would be one of the meters that we would go with. Um, this is not a radio readout meter, but the bottom section is the same thing as a radio readout meter, you can take this part off and put a radio meter on here.
Okay.
Um, thirty of these meters. That's including.
Now, you gotta go right up to it still?
Um, no, actually, the readout ones, you don't have to, you have a little belt clip receiver thing, you walk, either in your vehicle, or if you're walking or whatever, it'll just transfer, transmit.
This one here does?
Not this one, no. From the, the disc meter to your receiver, and then also you have to come and do it and just put in a computer.
Okay, and what are those, the thirty of them?
Um, thirty of these is, well, sixteen thousand.
Those are the ones that read?
These, not these ones, but yes, that would be the radio readout.
Sixteen thousand for the radio readout?
Right, but if we went with thirty of these with a touchpad, and I think, these are a three wire, that means we'd have to do, a lot of our meters are two wires, these are three, so we gotta do a lot of change up for, uh, wires and stuff like that. And that price was twelve thousand, twelve thousand two hundred.
So what would the, the other ones that for sixteen, like we would need new programming then, or computer programs, I assume?
We, what do we have now?
The actual reader, I assume is more.
The reader is that?
Your hip reader, whatever you wanna call it, your pocket reader.
It's actually not that much more expensive to do the radio readout versus these.
So the radio readout is the one, you don't have to walk up to them?
That's what I'm saying, but what is the actual radio deal that you carry, what's that cost?
Um, I'll go back to that.
Is that separate?
I'd be more interested in doing that for the four extra thousand, we can just pick out thirty of the yards that are the hardest to get into, we don't raise hell, we have a grant and move on, right?
I understood. The radio receiver that, uh, clipped is forty-five hundred.
Okay, so, twenty thousand, but then you're saying a bunch of wiring too?
No, those are the ones that take the wire, and that's not.
No, this is a radio one.
No, this one is not a radio one.
The front wire one is a mechanical. How does it transmit to the readout one? Does it have a readout on the wall then?
No, it just, it's, it's all built in.
Have to go in and read, or how do you read it then?
It shoots a signal from this meter to the receiver.
Would you have to be?
So we could be sitting in the car or standing outside?
We'd be sitting in the car.
Look, this one here, that you got right here.
This one here, we got wires up to it and have this sitting outside.
But the other, the radio one's just a two wire one also?
There is no wires.
Yeah, it's all perfect.
So there's.
There's a four thousand.
Is there a battery in there, did that mean anything on that wire?
Yes, there is a battery. It's, they got a twenty year warranty on that battery.
I mean, you don't have to charge or do anything for twenty years?
Right. And, I mean, Lauren was here, Jeff, you were in the chair, I thought both of those were here.
And she was willing to come tonight and forgot.
No, she was busy.
Oh, she was.
I'm, I'm all for that.
I mean, we can look up, I mean, anything that had, went through that meter, we can look it up, I mean, it's got graphs on every meter that we put in, it's.
My daughter does it for Streeter, and she just literally, when I'm at work, I see her, she just literally, like, she's driving up and down the street, and she's got all of them, goes back to.
Can you get to that point?
I think so too.
And you're at sixteen thousand for thirty of them, well, we got twenty, absolutely, the radio readout.
Radio readouts, yeah.
Because we have twenty-one thousand right now, and then next year we get another twenty-one thousand again, for the same thing, huh?
We'll get you thirty of these plus the receiver for your.
And then next year, if we don't have another major project, we can get another thirty.
I see, but like you said, the time you're done wiring everything in.
The meter itself is for the radio readout meters, or they're only a hundred and fifty bucks for just the meter.
I don't even, don't wanna discuss this, to be honest with you.
But we need to.
Even if we gotta spend a little.
I showed you, there was that Neptune, or what was it? There was that third one, remember?
Um, yeah, what?
Then the guy from the state, he didn't recommend it?
Yeah, he wouldn't recommend more the radio readout this style.
Yep.
The mechanical, what did he, what did she call the other one? Autasonic, is that right? No.
God dang it, I can't.
Anyway, it picks, there's a different style meter, there's no moving parts.
But they don't recommend that one?
Well, some people recommend it, but the guy that works for the state, is a circuit writer that's helped me all pretty good, he said he would not recommend that one, I mean, they're more expensive, but, he thinks that these are a better meter, to have the mechanical used ones.
You guys agree or okay with that then?
Yeah. Because he, he said those don't have long of warranty, do they? And there you can't replace, you throw everything away.
These ones, you just take these.
So do you have to have a computer program for this?
I'm sure there's some sort of a application that you've got.
Bill, does the numbers come onto this, and then that would come to here, and then I would put the figures in, or is there another new program for that?
Or does it load into?
Call Bailey about it, she'll know, or Kate Schultz.
Did you call that, did you call that lady?
No.
That was selling this, or put a number on it?
Oh, I know. And if we can get that, if, you know, if we do thirty meters.
But she wants to come to one of our council meetings and explain more, so.
Yeah, because we could get thirty this year and thirty next year, and then I keep looking for more brands.
Even if it costs us a little bit more this first year than twenty-nine thousand?
Might have them all done.
To get the, to get that pocket deal or whatever, I mean, that's why, I think, I don't know.
Because we figured we could put the oldest of our meters on all the hunter houses and put these newer ones on people that live here constantly.
We could get a mortar, start changing more, especially these houses that all the garbage around there, hard to get.
Then we wouldn't have to worry about that.
Yeah, that, there's your.
There's our answer right there.
Chip, I think you should.
Checkbook's right here.
Well, we already had motion this last.
We had motioned it, so.
Yeah, I.
That's our recommendation, I guess, so.
Get them coming.
I have the checkbook right here, you just tell me who I write to.
And like I said, if that, the software and all that comes a little above, I don't see why that would be a problem that first year.
I didn't, we would only order twenty of them, what do we do with that one, just let's find out what the software cost is gonna be, or the receiver and all.
We got twenty-one thousand dollars, let's spend it on what we can keep the money on.
Yeah, if we don't order twenty some meters.
Whatever, whatever it takes, to get to that twenty-one and then.
Yep.
Because one thing that worries me about the wire type, you know, I don't know, you know, like at our house, I've taken at my own house, that wire goes, they work on a pulse. And being, it goes out, right, we're all electrical, there's, could be so much interference that it's probably getting false signals there, you know.
There look good. And they say it's pretty accurate from what you were telling me.
Like, I, you know, like these ones down in Birch here, not all of Birch, but I've heard that you probably won't even have to leave the city hall to get, for them to shoot the signal to.
Be nice, they had some sort of a format or an application where it'll alert you if it was using more water than one would need, then. Be nice if they had some sort of a format or an application where it'll alert you if it was using more water than one would need, then.
Oh, it does. It'll have all that.
Something like one there.
It'll help, it'll even have to show it if that meter is running backwards. So if somebody takes a meter out and flips it around, it'll even show that. It'll, it'll, it'll pop up as a red flag. Or, or backflow.
Alright, that's pretty cool. I think we need to get there. It should be nice, especially young ladies and gentlemen out there to try to trudge the snowdrifts and get this done, and it'd be a lot easier. And that's definitely the way for the future out there.
You know, what you probably could do, Sheriff, is just try to let Bill know which of the highest priority houses.
Okay.
And get them there first.
I bet you could wipe out twenty, go away.
Oh, yeah, him and I can tell you. We both could tell you which one that needs to go down.
It would certainly help, twenty years.
Perfect. We got that ironed out, boys?
I do.
Alright, anything else, Bill? Alright, appreciate you doing that for us. Alright, auditor.
Alright, Julie Schultz, when we discussed, um, raises last time. Um, you gave everybody in maintenance the dollar raise. Well, when I let her know she got a raise, and I went in the computer, she's been here the longest out of everybody. Twelve, is it twelve years? Something like that, maybe? She never got a raise once, and she's still at ten dollars an hour.
Damn it, Bill.
It's your employee.
She won't say anything.
You're gonna piss Judy off.
But I did give her, no, I think she was a dollar because we were supposed to, and I was floored it was said ten dollars. So that's something you guys gotta think about.
How is she not with, I guess I was understanding she was with the other ones, but.
Well, I thought she, I thought everybody got a raise.
Well, yeah, she got the raise, then everybody got a dollar raise.
I didn't realize she was at ten. I guess I thought she was.
The thing is, that she was only at ten dollars an hour over twelve years.
And what does she put in with?
She watches the dump on Saturdays, and sometimes on Wednesdays, depending on if Tim can do it, and vice versa with Tim, you know. But most of the time it's Saturdays, four hours on Saturdays.
What's Tim in?
Tim's in, but Tim does a lot of other trash. I think he's at the fifteen mark, fifteen, sixteen.
Well, he'd be at sixteen, I think, cause that's.
Yeah, he just got a raise to sixteen.
Everyone's at sixteen. I thought everyone was at sixteen. I would've watched that dump for four hours on Saturday for forty bucks. I'm not gonna lie to you.
She does her, she pays her retract, cause she gets her transmission down, so she pays that, and she usually ends up with a little bit of money afterwards.
Would she be okay with sixteen then, or?
Are you kidding? She was happy with eleven.
Just go to sixteen.
We can make it across the board.
Just clean it up.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, and apologize, I'll, when I see her, I'll apologize for that. I just assumed she was with. Okay.
And then, I, we already went over a little bit, the share of funds policing and health. You, I just wanted to, that was just informational for you guys, that the new deputy has a wife, so he now has a family policy. Well, so we went up, they went up two hundred dollars for our, our share of health insurance.
I talked, that's really bring this up anyways, you guys. Uh, with, we've never had it before where the deputy was actually looking at living outside of city limits. And I don't know if it's an issue or not. And I don't know what the agreement was, just because, shit, that's been, since I was in high school, the deputies always lived in town, so we've never. And we had heard that he was looking at a place outside of town, and what Sheriff Andrew had told me was, as long as, if he got a call, he was a couple minutes out, not. You know, ten, fifteen, or, you know, if he was within a couple minutes is what I was told. That that's what they kind of agreed upon before. But I don't know what your guys' feelings is on this, because we do. I mean, we interviewed for a deputy, and it, we do pay on the county level. Our citizens are paying, also the city level, we're paying, uh, which is now eleven.
The newest one, yeah.
And this is how often?
Once a month.
Okay, so I, I just wanted to get your guys' feeling and that everyone's aware of this. I, Lauren, I, I know you and I have talked about this.
Didn't we just jump up the other deputy's two hundred dollars here not too long ago? Cause he got married?
That was not Alex. Oh, Mike.
That was Mike.
We don't.
But did we pick, yeah, yeah, we did.
See, that's what I question.
We used to pay four and four. Then it was five something. If you can see those last three, um, but this last one just came in here. I just opened it up today, and I'm like, wait a minute, this is getting a little. A little high here, so I figured I should bring it to your attention. I don't know what y'all agree on or whatever.
And I really don't know Deputy Kyle's plans or whatever, but we just wanted to clear this up, cause I don't want any hard feelings or anything moving forward that, because we didn't address it as well getting out.
He is moving into apartments for right now.
Mm-hmm. But I'm saying if that's what was agreed upon, then we should let him know that and Sheriff Andrew, so that moving forward, there's no.
Did we, did we sign a contract with Logan County?
We did.
It doesn't say, state anything in the contract?
Well, I guess I don't know it's, it's a contract.
Andrew didn't know either when I had talked to him.
Yeah.
I haven't actually seen the contract.
Stated in the contract, well then, we don't have it. But if it's stated in the contract that he has to live within city limits, that's a different story.
We just always assumed it was that way, I guess, is the problem. We just assumed.
Oh, idea, if it's.
Should I call her and see if we could get a copy of the contract?
Even if we're paying policing for the city of Gackel, I think he should be really close, if not in the city limits.
Cause that's the thing too, it does, I don't know if it's specified that he's supposed to spend a certain amount of time in city limits policing.
Should I just call over and have her send us the contract?
Yeah.
Probably.
And then maybe we should see what Deputy Kyle's intentions are, and speak, maybe Andrew and Kyle should be here next meeting, so that we can all go through this together.
Right, talk about it.
Yeah, but we just wanted to make you aware, especially, we didn't realize it went up a couple hundred more, not well, yeah.
I just got open it today, so that's why I figured I would grab the last few bills, so you guys can see what's going on.
Oh, no, that's because that was down. Yeah, so we're up a little over two hundred bucks, but yeah.
That's about fourteen thousand a year.
We used to pay eight hundred dollars when I first started.
That's way too low, in my opinion.
Oh, that's our.
I know, I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
Right.
For what these guys have gotta go through and stuff, these guys are not getting paid enough, so I had absolutely no problem paying these guys that right now.
Okay, I'll, I'll get you that thing, but I.
But I understand what you're saying, if you're gonna be living out of town, and we're paying you to live in town, I mean, I understand, I get that.
We're just, and see, that's what I think.
That's where I have a problem, you know, why is Gackel paying if he's not obligated to serve a certain amount of time?
I understand.
If Napoleon's not paying nothing, cause they got a city cop.
Right.
Fredonian's not paying.
I understand that.
We should.
Isn't there some other towns that share with us? Cause this is a shared fee.
I don't.
This is a shared fee. It's our share of that.
So Fredonians?
One, sure, Fredonia has some.
And.
I would, we should have probably talked to Sam Insman here once, Dean. Cause he was sitting here that night when we first negotiated, that was quite a while ago. Uh, when Andrew came in and asking for better healthcare and all that, and we, I mean, we absolutely have no problem doing that. I wanted to get out there, that's.
Oh, no.
But if there was some deal, like you said, where he should be policing town so much, and I, I don't remember what the other stipulation, maybe Dean would know. Cause I know he was sitting here that night when we went through all that.
No, I, I agree.
We just, we just wanna cover as far as the council's concerned, not that there's people that come at us later, and we didn't check into it. We just wanna check into it.
Ron just gave me a thing here, says Andrew is seven miles out of town.
Sheriff's different though.
Sheriff's different than deputy.
Yeah, yeah.
We got a better answer.
Yeah, they get paid on a different system or on a.
He should be, yeah, and actually, I agree with him being, he wanted to be actually right in between Gackel and Napoleon, which is.
Probably the best place.
Oh, actually, that is, that's for sure.
Cause he wanted to buy that permanent place way back when, but. Yeah, no, that's, the deputy would be different though, so. But we just wanna make sure we're doing the right thing before we.
Yeah.
So then we're paying for two deputies, Mike and the new one.
I didn't know we were paying for Mike and this person.
Yes, it is. We, that Mike had a, that, those half, that, that is for Mike and both deputies to have half their insurance paid and half their.
So maybe, yeah, call and get that contract, and then we'll speak with Andrew and see if him and Kyle can come in next meeting, so we don't.
Yeah.
I don't want any hard feelings or anything over this. We just wanna cover everything, so.
Like I said, I think that's a shared thing, cause she said Mike, Mike and his wife, and now the new one and his wife are on this policy. And I think we pay part of it, and other towns pay part of it.
Okay, well, that makes sense.
Yeah.
People do.
Yeah. Alright, I'll ask you for that. And I think that's it.
Along with it.
Oh, and then down here further is the city taxes. Do you, or what is, you, you guys should start thinking about for the city, are we gonna be paying our taxes, street tax assessments in the full, or are we gonna pay them yearly? And pay the three percent interest, or?
That's, that's fully dependent on the person.
No, the city of Gackel.
Oh, the city.
The city of Gackel. This is something you guys are gonna have to start thinking about.
I'm sorry.
Do we, do we wanna get that, try to get it paid in full? Or do we wanna pay it monthly and have to pay three percent interest?
Do we have to be in line?
I can have them here, I'll, I'll have them for you if you want them. But I just kinda was putting a bug in your ear, which way you guys should think about which way the city wants to go.
Yeah, you better get us that amount, because.
Yeah, I don't think we can afford to.
Be a heck of a first timer.
Okay, I have some people, some people have paid in full.
Yes, if you guys ever wanted, would ever wanna look at this, um, and see what's going on. Let me see if I have a label on here, City of Gackel Tax Assessment. This book will always sit over there, and you can go into it. And if you go to twenty twenty-two, we're at, anything that's highlighted yellow is paid in full. So they will no longer, they're all done. And then it goes on and on and on. See, I have to turn in the figures each year, so. And as of right now, of that account, in which you guys did tell me once we pay in, we've got, the ones that have paid off have already brought in ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and forty-five cents. When should that be sent off? Should I wait until all the money comes in February, or you want us to want me to send this off towards the main loan? That's what we have in this account already collected, so we need to figure out when we wanna send that off and pay, pay down the debt.
It's tough, because we're. We got a CD that we're making one percent on, but we're paying three percent on, but at the same time, we might need that money for a garbage truck.
Oh, no.
And we'd be paying.
I don't think we can use it. If they're paying it for special assessment, it has to go on the special assessment.
No, he's talking about for the cities, I think.
The cities' tax.
Oh, yeah, right.
No, these all have to go on the special assessment, but how long should I wait before I assess this money off?
I wonder if actually, if you shouldn't send it in with that amount, you know, we're paying three.
With this big amount?
Or we're paying three percent.
Cause the, the residents won't give, but we would get the three percent. For the money, cause they already paid theirs off.
Yeah.
So this is their money that was paid off.
Bill, it would stop that principal.
It would sell our principal up there, so how high do you want me to get this right now? It's sitting at ninety-six thousand. Should I ship them off one now?
I think money that was forwarded in full should be forwarded as quick as possible up to.
Okay, then I'll send them a check right away.
And I had.
I was trying to get it a few days, cause a lot of people were trying to pay before the end of the year, so they could use it as tax right off. So now that the end of the year's gone, that's why I'm asking, do you want me to forward this off?
And there's some that wanna pay like half?
Um, I've only come across one who wants to make some overpayments each month, each year. But, um, she'd have to pay what she got from Logan County to Logan County, and any extra money, she'd have to come here and pay this. Because Logan County doesn't know what everybody owes.
Right.
They just know whatever we give them each year. So anybody paying anything above that amount has to come pay us.
Which is, yeah.
Cause I get.
She pays half now, I mean, you're not gaining anything unless you pay the other half off before your twenty years. It's like any other loan.
It lowers, like, I know that one guy.
Three percent.
He wanted, he thought his was sixty-one hundred. He thought maybe he'd pay three thousand right after the first of this year. And then at the end of next, or twenty twenty-three, he'd pay the balance.
But he still has to take and pay, pay Logan County?
He did.
Oh, okay.
When I had the sheet, I explained it very clear to him. Don't send it to us, or don't send it to the county.
I had one already do that. We had, Logan County had ripped their check up, and he had to issue me a new check. Because they said, what they say is, it sits here, we don't know what to do with it. We only know what to do with this portion.
That's why I think we should forward it up to Bismarck or to the bond.
Well, that's why I was waiting till after the first. I know Drew had, Drew had already told me that he to send it off, you know, once I get enough in here, but.
Because I would assume then, with the payoff, our annual installments gonna really start dropping too.
Oh, yeah. We're up quite ten percent right now. At a hundred thousand.
I'll send off the, that two thousand.
Okay.
Could you send it to the bond bank or to the engineers?
No, sorry, um, bond bank.
The bond bank.
The engineers.
We can throw it, let's keep throwing it out. Like you said, it'll stop interest on. Yeah, as soon as we're done, so.
Yeah, because then we're gonna get a bunch more in February when they collect all that first amount, then as soon as that's done, then I ship all that off right away, Bill.
So another number, if you could figure out, please, we have to get going on that. What would we say that, thirty-five dollars?
Infrastructure fee.
Because we're gonna have a big payment due from the city for our portion of all of our city property. And we're not gonna be able to, I mean, we're, we gotta come up with that somehow. And that's not in on what these people are paying off. That's the portion.
That's right.
That's not the city's portion. And that's why I didn't agree with how we set, we had to set that all up. Because everyone's portion is just, there is, there's also the city property that it is, you know, responsible for too, so. And I wish that was on there, but we couldn't do it that way.
Oh, you mean like city hall, the, the parks, the?
Parks, yeah.
All that stuff, yeah.
Baseball down, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so you wanna get, you, I'll get those together, everything that.
Yeah, and see what our payment is there too.
And this book will always be held over here, in case anybody wanted to look in it.
Okay.
And we did turn in our, all our city permits this year, they're turned in for taxes. Yeah, and I got all that all done.
Alright, while Lauren's looking for that, we'll, Taylor's not here, so we got nothing to do. Jeff, you got anything?
Yeah, I had a couple streetlights out, uh, on, uh, Second Avenue in Cedar and Second Avenue in Elm. I contacted Steve Powers via text, and he just jumped right on. He's not replying. This, I just sent this yesterday. Um, my understanding that. There's a, another Steve, Steve Schultz, that might be the go-to guy at Otterdale now. I got his phone number. He just happens to be a friend of mine, so I'll ask him if maybe Steve Powers didn't receive it, or.
Okay.
But he's, I guess he's next in line for Steve or something. Anyway, it's, I'll send him a text tomorrow morning. And just let him know that I didn't receive that confirmation from Steve Powers.
Perfect.
Other than that.
Appreciate you doing that. Uh, Larry, you got anything for us?
Just the garbage truck, we talked about that earlier.
Lauren, you have anything for, for department parts, Bill? Okay, we were just kinda getting some things done there while you were looking for your.
That's fine.
Okay, uh, old business, we had approved liquor and beer license. Okay, uh, old business, we had approved liquor and beer license for Danny's. That's done. Legion Hall and Co-op, we got all those together. Um, look over West End. Hide and Fer check. I think we're still, there's still, or no, that was something different. Yeah, that was for the. Sorry, it wasn't that for out there that container or whatever. Yeah, I thought it was for the, we take our garbage too. All right, vehicles without proper tags are broken down. Andrew is taking care of that for us. I already heard that somewhere.
Doing a good job.
He towed a few off over here that weren't moved after the storm that I was told was given a few extra weeks to get it done past the sixteenth, so appreciate him doing that. The new deputy that we covered here. All right, uh, new business, city taxes.
There we go.
We talked about that. Snow removal at Jason's, uh, talked about that. Open pathway to water meters. I think we got a good thing going there, so.
Yeah.
And then letter from Brian Day on the rate study. And then we touched on that one a little bit, guys. That was that deal that our autograph did a bunch, a bunch of extra work, but I think it was worth it. Basically, they take a bunch of our uh, a summary of all of our rates and, and, uh, see how we're doing and what we should raise. Give us heads up on what we should raise and what we're behind on. There was a few things and everything that we were behind on that we're basically losing money on, we have talked about and are raising. And I think, uh, the water and sewer and infrastructure was the three big ones, correct? From what I, what I read there. I don't know if you guys had a chance to read this, but. And that's everything we've touched on for this last year, so. And we're real close, but um, last year we lost money on it, so it's, it's great that we're getting ahead on that. It sucks that we got to raise it after we lowered it, uh, but that was ten years ago, so it's the way it goes.
So we're taking the infrastructure fee at thirty-five dollars? It's at five dollars.
It's total of thirty-five. We're going to take it up thirty-five to forty. I thought I just said.
We can't just raise it, can we? The infrastructure fee.
No, and that's why we.
We have to designate where it's going.
It's got, it's got to stay at what we have there.
Got to.
How to you talk to that lady?
Yeah, it'd be its own new infrastructure fee. Is that ready?
What we can do is if we want to say we're raising it thirty dollars a month, then we have to decide if we want to put ten towards infrastructure, ten towards water, ten towards sewer, ten towards garbage, you know, five, whatever, it adds up to what we want, but, um, and then once a year we can move. God damn it, I forgot what that number was now.
We can allocate.
We can allocate a certain percentage of that. I apologize, I should know this, um, to our general fund. So if we're out of that thirty dollars, if we move ten over to infrastructure, we can move a part of that over to general fund to help with the city part of our payment for roads. Um, or garbage, we can move a certain percentage of that over towards a garbage truck to the general fund. And I, I want to say it's five percent, but I'm not positive on that.
What do you think, Lauren?
And according to this, we need to raise, they're asking us, they're telling us that we should raise all three of those.
Just to cover what we got.
Last year we were.
In hold.
In hold, yes. And that is also before the street project, obviously, right?
A little hazy on the allocation or what are they telling us that we have to put the money? That, that a little unclear on. They're saying water, sewer and garbage are three that you can raise.
Infrastructure, because we started an account before two thousand eleven on that, when you guys did that.
Sewer project.
The sewer project. We can, we're kind of grandfathered in basically on having that account open, is what she told me. There's a little bit of gray area, but since you guys opened that back then, we're good to have an infrastructure fee, but we can't just have an infrastructure fee per se.
So if we, if our garbage truck fails, can we go to this infrastructure? Can we, how can we access this money?
We were hoping that the garbage truck lasted a few more years than just this year and we could keep allocating that percent over to the general fund.
Over and over and over.
But Bill's full of bad news tonight. And that twenty-one thousand's not going to help.
Spend money on the garbage truck. I'm just saying, how are you, how are you going to get the money to where it needs to be used?
To, but the infrastructure fee, that would go onto the general fund, right? Or it goes in the infrastructure account?
Cause we have that account set up since.
It's all, all of it's in the general fund, but it's, in, in the general fund, there's a lot of accounts.
Right.
So infrastructure's one account into this general fund.
Yeah, but this is sewer infrastructure. Now we need a road infrastructure?
That's what I'm wondering.
We can't start that now.
You can't.
According to the lady I told.
Oh, you can't.
But that, they say it was ten dollars, so that could be used for either water or garbage, right?
I thought it was sewer, what?
We'd have to break it down to each account, what we want.
And that's the only place it can get used in.
Well, that's not doing much good for.
But there's no way you can't tell me that we can't get a garbage truck out of the garbage fund for a garbage truck, right? We can't.
I thought you would have to raise garbage per se.
That's what I'm saying. We want to.
But we don't raise just the infrastructure.
So you need to put more money into garbage.
I thought you need to raise, like raise the garbage, raise the water, raise the sewer. You can't put it all into one infrastructure, can you?
No, we can't put it in.
No. The infrastructure, one account we have open now is for sewer, correct? But one plus.
You know, I thought it was general fund, that it actually was in general fund. It can go either any direction wherever we.
No, I think it's sewer that you, it was.
And maybe I was wrong.
See, and that's where.
Whatever it is.
When we first started, however many years ago, the street project, everyone was saying you should raise the thirty dollars rate now. There's a few citizens saying that, and we just cannot raise thirty dollars to put into a general fund. We need to allocate that towards something, but we can take a percentage of that and put it into the general fund, if that makes sense. We can't just charge citizens without allocating for a reason, you know, basically.
Hundred percent. And if that's the case, then we need to figure that out soon, because it needs to be started.
And right here is proof why we need to get.
They're telling you right there.
Well, right here, they're saying in order for you to keep your loans the way they are, you're supposed to have some.
One point two is what they're saying.
So where I go right now.
Yep.
So I jokingly ask him, what are they going to do? Come get, come get the stuff back?
How many gallons of water do we bill out about in a month?
Huh?
How many gallons of water do we bill out in a month?
Above. I don't know. I can't keep track of the gallons. I just.
Well, if we use thirty thousand a day. Just.
Well, our average, our average daily for the last couple of months has been I want to say right on that forty. Some days it's higher, some days it's lower. For this last month, we used, in the month of December, we used one point two million gallons is what I read out down there.
You think we bill out a million gallons in a month? Well, I guess what I'm getting at, you know, we're paying three seventy-five, I think it's a thousand to rural. And we're charging four. If we went rather than just a ten dollar flat rate water fee increase, if we could charge more per thousand gallon.
So would this be here for the month right here?
That's exactly what they're telling us we should do right there.
Any more use for, this is our, this is for our monthly. That's our ba, prior balance credits, charges.
So in other words.
So this would be for the month of Dis- December. All right, if you go here, let's see. Our way to, let's find water, water. There's your main uses for the meters. Well, it's, yeah, it's eight, eight, one, two, four, one. Anytime you ever want to find any of that stuff, it's right here on all the water bill information.
So that's about eight, hundred eighty-one thousand. If we increase by, I'll just say fifty cents. You know, I mean, what I'm driving at is the heavier users are going to just pay more. And the average house is mainly two thousand gallons, so it's going to be at fifty cents, it's a dollar and a half.
Except for you and I have got a lot of girls.
Drew's has gone down since he doesn't have girls in his house.
Well, I tell you guys what, I urge you to read this again and then really think about it, because this gives a lot of information. We should get that to Bubba and see by next month, I would say we better get this locked down and get going. We got our numbers back like we were waiting for. We got this study back, which tells us what we already knew. We don't want to do it, but I don't see any other way.
So for right now, I'm waiting for all of you to tell me which way.
We gotta talk to Bubba, get him up to speed. See what he thinks.
So we just have to, to break it down, garbage? Everything like that and just raise the garbage rate, raise this rate? Well, the garbage rate definitely because we're the cheapest town around. Everybody else is up to quite a bit more. We probably, we'll charge ten dollars for garbage. Most of them are up to like eighteen, twenty dollars for garbage.
That's the problem, running into the streets with garbage boards. We want it, we want to.
We're behind on everything in this town. You go to another town, you're paying more. Cause I thought around for a pride few that, when, when we found out about garbage and we are the cheapest one.
Well, it's, it's going up. That's the problem, but we just need to know where to allocate it and what's going to make the most sense for what we need and what we know we're going to need.
And if we do away with the garbage truck and have somebody come in here like these other towns, then.
Oh, we can't. I already looked into that.
That costs a fortune.
It costs too much.
They won't even look at us.
Fifty dollars a month per person.
Dakota sanitation wouldn't come in here, give us a bid, so we're screwed.
Right, yeah, oh, you couldn't even get that, yeah.
We're.
How do they go into Streeter?
I, trust me, when that dump closed down there, I was on the phone a lot with some high up people and they we're screwed right here. They go to Streeter, but they won't come to us because that's out of Bismarck and Fargo won't come this far, but they are to Fredonia, I think, or. Who are they to, or?
Angely, I think.
Angely? I know they're not too far away, but yeah, they won't pick us up.
Let's just, uh.
So we gotta figure something out on our own here.
And like call Bean or.
Or Waste Man, it used to be Dakota Sanitation, sorry.
Makes sense.
Now we got Monopoli and Louis. But they put on L O golf tournament.
They should.
That's what I was saying. I think probably better way, they actually push the pencil and like on the water, just go up, put a thousand usage.
Okay.
Rather than just a flat dollar amount.
Whether they just charge everyone that's not using right now. I agree with it.
I like that. If you're not using it, then you should never pay for it.
Yep.
And that would make them, I think, I think that makes sense.
So you guys.
And we, you know, split it like the garbage, you know, there, we had no option. We can't go by weight or, you know, there we got a dollar amount.
Right. And I tell you guys what, we don't want to go with waste management after some of the people in our city here, you'd be paying per, per can. And I know I'd fill two or three of them every week, so, well, you guys know that. There's a lot of people that would live or that, that have to pay for two, times two.
And they walk away, if we, you put one bag on the side, they don't take it up. They don't come out of the trucks. They, they are pity.
Not even about the empty truck.
Some of them. What would you do if your Thursdays and now Fridays, Saturday, trucks roll? All right, yeah, I just urge you guys to look this over and get some ideas, I guess, numbers.
We would need.
I'm just putting my jacket on.
I should ask, it's getting chilly.
Maybe Homeland Security will pay for new insulation in our walls.
Maybe we should have turned the heat up when we came in here.
All right, did you guys get a chance to look at the bills?
I did.
And then there was one. I don't know if everyone was here when Sharon discussed that, but. What was this at? Okay. So that transfer grant money for twenty-one, four thirty-one. On that second page there, you guys see that came out of its own account there, so that's why our numbers are so different on the forty-two thirty, correct?
Right. It shows that we spent forty-two thousand, but we really didn't. We transferred twenty-one thousand into the grant money's account. So actually our bills were only what, twenty-two thousand?
Okay. Any questions on that? If not, we'll take a motion to approve. Fogo, Lauren, second.
I'll second.
Larry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and water bills, everything's looking a hell of a lot better this month.
Yep, no, we didn't have to do any shut off, turn offs.
Good.
Out of all the ones we were attempting to last month.
Good, because I.
Took a few little phone calls, but.
All right, guys, well, no other questions or concerns on any of that then? You're going through everything?
I will be here next month.
Date and time?
Be in the big California nine.
Football will be over by then. Come on, what are you doing? Oh, shit, okay. Uh, Monday, February seventh, at seven, that'll work for everyone else?
Yep.
Okay, uh, motion to adjourn then, guys.
Fogo.
Lauren.
I said.
Second, all those in favor?
At eight thirty?
Seven?
Huh?
At seven, you said? No. Adjourn time.
Oh.
We got followers that critique us at eight thirty-two, exactly.
Eight thirty-two?
Yeah.
I would have the cities in here. I got most of them handed out.
Oh, okay. Well, that's good for you. There's a lot of people that pay in the full array. That's good to see.
Or is it more, is it more than that?
Mr. Nice from here was the first one.
Thank you. Is that ironic?
I don't want to leave my daughter with a, a state problem.
Oh, okay. Save, Ron. Well, we appreciate you doing that.